Today, January the 11th. And I officially call the meeting of the Town of Spencer Board of Aldermen, our regular meeting for the month of January, to order. We do have a forum tonight, we have a full board present. And with that, we will begin with an invocation. Please bow your heads. Father, we thank you so much for new beginnings. We thank you for a new year in this town. We thank you for all of the many great things that we have been working on and that you have led this town towards during 2021. We ask that you help us continue those into 2022. We thank you for our residents, we thank you for our staff, and I thank you for these board members that sit beside me this evening. Be with us as we do the work of the town. Help us, give us guidance, discernment, and wisdom tonight in the decisions that we make. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes from our December 9th pre-agenda meeting and our December 14th, 2021 regular meeting. So with that, are there any adjustments required of those minutes at this time? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
(Inaudible) move that we approve the minute of December 9th, December 14th.
Okay, there's a motion. By Ms. Sledge, a second by Mr. Muhammad. All in favor? Raise your hand. All right, that motion is approved. Okay. Next item is additions and deletions to the agenda and subsequent adoption of the agenda. And with that, you'll have your agenda before you, and we did not have a pre-agenda meeting this month due to some timing issues. But the agenda is before you. My understanding is there is one item that staff is requesting that we add to the agenda this evening, and so Mr. Francis, I will let you bring it up before the board.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. We would like to request that board consider scheduling a legislative or legislative public hearings for two proposed text amendments, the Spencer development ordinance. One is related to temporary signage, and one is related to decriminalization of violations according to the new state laws. And if, Kyle, if you would like to provide a brief summary of that.
Yes, I will just provide, and thank you very much, good to be here everyone. I'll provide a brief, very brief overview of this request. Last night, the planning board reviewed two proposed text amendments. They involve changing regulations around freestanding temporary signage, as well as bringing our development ordinance into compliance with new state law, a session law which takes away local government's ability to criminally enforce our development ordinances. This is not something that's uncommon throughout the state. All local governments will be doing the same thing, so we're just bringing the town into compliance with those requirements. The reason that I'm asking to add this item to the agenda, I'm requesting that the board will set a legislative hearing for both text amendments at your pre-agenda meeting next month, which will take place on February 3rd. We do have to meet notification requirement, we have to post it in the Salisbury Post once a week for two consecutive weeks, and so getting the time for that legislative hearing will allow us to meet our notification requirement. When we do conduct that legislative hearing, I will provide a more comprehensive overview of both of those texts.
Okay, very good. So I would suggest to the board that we add that as item 13 on our agenda. And so with, yeah, those will subsequently be 14, 15, and 16. All right, any questions on that? And if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
(Inaudible).
A motion by Mayor Protim, is there a second? Second by Ms. Sledge, all in favor? All right, all opposed. All right, our agenda is set for this evening. And with that, we will open up for recognitions. We do have one proclamation to read, but I'll give the board an opportunity if there are any other recognitions that you would like to make this evening.
I'd like to get on that. The fire chief had a special presentation about, he had a special delivery with his Santa Claus a couple days before Christmas. I'd like to thank him for thinking about the kids of Spencer and what he did for that. I think that was a tremendous idea from the fire department. Mike has done a good job. So thank you, Mr. Lanning, you've done a good job, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Any others? Okay. With that, I will read a proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Day in 2022, which is January 17th. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas January 17th, 2022 marks the observance of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. federal holiday, and whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all and compels us to continue to serve as an appropriate way to honor Dr. King and bring our citizens together and strengthen the communities and nation. And whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday, and whereas the observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday allows for each of us to contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens. And whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, and whereas the Town of Spencer is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation, now therefore, I Jonathan D. Williams, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Spencer, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. In the Town of Spencer, and encourage all our citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage, culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Right, we look forward to celebrating that on Monday. And with that, we will move to the public comment section of our agenda. If there are folks wishing to speak tonight during public comment, you'll be limited to three minutes, and we would ask that come forward and provide your name and address for the record prior to speaking. So with that, we will open it up for any public comment for anyone here tonight. All right, seeing none. I have been made aware of one written public comment that will be shared. Have we received any others beyond that?
No.
Okay, would you like to read that for the record for us?
I would.
Thank you.
Jenna Sales, 321 Salisbury Road. Good evening, Mayor and board members. I am coming to you tonight about code violations. I for one probably haven't seen Mr. Osborne in our neighborhood, but maybe twice in the last six months, and that was him going down to DPW. I did however see him at 104 Salisbury during the summer, and he was out talking to the tenants. He must have made a wonderful impression because since then, that property has gotten worse. It is hard for me to understand how he can be out looking at violations when every time I come by town hall, his truck is there. The board sits up here and makes all these ordinances and parking in yard garbage and such, but no one enforces them. Your website used to have a place where you could put in information about code violations, but that has been removed. But every month, I hear Mr. Osborne talk about it coming back to the website. So how long is that going to take? There isn't anywhere to put anything for that anymore. That seemed like a good tool for the community to be able to help the violations by letting the code person know where to go look. You keep talking about making this town attractive for people to come to here, but you sit with your hands folded. Someone isn't doing their job, and someone should be held accountable. The accountability falls on the town manager as he is over personnel. Alderman Morgan brings this up often, but it seems like it falls upon their peers. If the problem is with landlords, then find them or find the tenant. The people of Spencer that keep their property looking nice want the neighboring properties to look good too. This keeps their value up. Your vision states uphold community integrity through enforcement of codes and regulations. So you as a board, are you standing behind your vision, or are those just your words?
All right, thank you, Ms. Graven. All right, with that, we will move on to item number seven, our first business item, and that is to consider awarding hometown innovation grant. We selected small businesses and organizations in Spencer. Attachment three in your agenda material, and I'll invite Mr. Harris forward at this point.
All righty, thank you very much.
In one moment, I do, we will bring up, I believe Mr. Howell wants to make one statement regarding this particular agenda.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Manager, there is at least a possible conflict is one of the properties, actually I learned in reading the agenda, is actually property where our business is located. So I think, though I'm not sure I technically need to in just due course, I probably should excuse myself for this matter. I'll leave that to the mayor to the board.
Okay. And just based on the fact that Mr. Howell's business indirectly stands to benefit financially from the awarding of this grant, we, it's my recommendation to the board that we accept is a refusal from this particular item in our agenda. The board agreeable to that here? Okay. All right, Mr. Harris, thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Well, I can't think of a better way to get started with the new year with this very exciting program. I know I have spoken about this to the board previously, but for the benefit of our one new member who maybe didn't get the benefit of hearing me talk about this previously, the Town of Spencer in middle of last year applied in partnership with the Salisbury Community Development Corporation to a Duke Energy Foundation grant. It was called the Hometown Innovation Grant, and it did, we did, were awarded that grant as a town, and we received $25,000 from the Duke Energy Foundation. The Town of Spencer also allocated an additional $10,000 on top of that for this hometown innovation grant program. So essentially what this program is, is an enhanced facade grant program. In the past, the town, just by nature of being a smaller town, we typically do not have the resources to provide substantial facade grants. We do have a number of historic storefronts, as well as non-historic storefronts throughout town that could stand to benefit from some assistance or some exterior improvement. And so what this program was designed to do was to enhance storefronts, provide money for things like new awnings, painting, any repairs, new signage, lighting, basically any exterior improvement that a small business owner wished to make but didn't necessarily have the resources, could apply through this program, receive funding. And we actually, I was blown away by the response that we got from this program. We actually received, and I'll be specific about the numbers here, we received a total request of $92,000 in funding. And of course, the program budget is only $35,000, so of course, you know, we did have to make, as the Community Appearance Commission, did have to make some hard choices in determining which ones to recommend funding and which ones to deny. But I think what this program shows is that there is an eagerness among our small business community, among property owners, for this type of assistance. And I think, you know, understanding that the town is a small, it's a small town, I think maybe as staff, we can try to find additional ways to secure grant funding through even other organizations like the Robertson Family Foundation, other ways to creatively get funds to do this type of work moving forward. But in terms of this specific grant program, the Community Appearance Commission met before the holidays and reviewed all of the 15 grant applications that we received, oh, excuse me, we received a total of 22 applications for funding, and the CAC met in a joint meeting with the HPC to review those applications, and they ultimately recommended funding 15 of those. And I will get a little bit specific about how those funding recommendations were made. So each application was scored on a zero to six scoring system. So basically, let's say for an application, the CAC would determine what is the type of project, and what is the projected improvement, what is the community benefit of that project, and they would assign a score from zero to six. What the CAC ended up doing was fully, nearly fully funding the highest scoring program, or excuse me, the highest scoring project. And then for those projects that did not have a clear visual improvement or a community benefit, those received a lower score, and in some cases, the CAC recommended not funding those. So what you find before you in your memorandum, I've gone through and provided a brief description of each project, from project number one all the way to application number 21, and you'll find that I've included the CAC recommended award for each project, and I've also included the amount of money that would come from the town and the amount that would come through the Duke Energy Foundation. The CAC did believe that, they recognized that it was a hard project, it's a hard ask to figure out how to distribute $35,000 when there's, you know, we're being asked for almost $100,000. But we did have a very long meeting, and we thought that the outcome was fair, that the funding recommendation went towards the highest scoring, the most deserving project. And so what will happen after tonight, assuming that the board is ready to make a decision, staff will reach out to each of these applicants, we will inform anyone who was not awarded, and we will also prepare contracts with those who were awarded. That contract will establish timelines and expectations. It'll essentially say, if you carry out this project, this exterior improvement according to your application, the town will provide you a reimbursement fund. So what I will say in closing is, again, this program follows the model that the Salisbury, City of Salisbury uses for its facade grant program. So we're not really reinventing the wheel here, but we are providing much-needed resources to our local businesses, and I'm very excited about being involved in this program. And let me know if you have any questions. I'm sure there will be.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Does the board have any questions regarding the process or the recommendations from the CAC that are?
Thought it was interesting that many of the applications asked the full amount, but there were some applicants who asked it to come in. Apparently, they've done their homework.
Yes, each of the applicants, you can't request more than your total project cost. So the amount that you can request is based on the amount that you're putting. So essentially, if you have to go based on whatever cost estimates you've got from contractors, you have to justify the cost that you're requesting before you put in that request. So that's why you'll find that many of these applicants submitted something lower than what they were eligible for.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the recommendations and award the grant as recommended by the CAC?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller, any further discussion?
Just want to thank the board for doing this, because I know this was a lot of work, and y'all did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and I echo that, it's a great, great program, I'm glad that we're able to do it, and a lot of things go out to Duke Energy as well, or help them to fund, fund the grant. So Kyle, thanks for all your work on it too, and I hope it's been a big one.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, all opposed? And that is approved. All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. If I could, just take the liberty of saying, this project has really given me the opportunity to see the number of small businesses that we do have in Spencer. I know sometimes it can be hard to overlook, or it can be easy to overlook the amount of businesses that we have, but they are there, and they do provide important services. And, you know, at the beginning of this project, I was a little bit worried that we wouldn't have enough applicants submitting projects, and that we would have money left over. But of course, we had the exact opposite program, which I think is a great problem to have. This was very illuminating for me personally, and I think I learned, I learned a lot of new faces in Spencer through this. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is to consider approving a property lien at 411 South Iredale Avenue for nuisance abate. That will, welcome Mr. Howell back. All right, and with that, you will see that this is one of the properties we have been dealing with over the past several months. With that, Mr. Osborne, is there anything that we need to know about this particular lien? Okay. Very good, so that is in your agenda. Are there any questions about this particular lien? For the new members of the board, as I mentioned last month, this is standard process when we do have to take action against a property owner. We as a board have to approve the lien to be taken, and that is for legal purposes, so that the lien is effective and binding. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Take a motion, we approve it.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed? And that is approved. And with that, we will now move to our departmental report, and we will invite Kyle back for our planning departmental report.
Thank you again. I think I do want to focus in my departmental report on two specific projects. You may see in the coming month, two subdivisions going up. If you look at my departmental report, rows two and three are two subdivision projects. One of them is, involves the creation of four new residential lots, and that is going to take place on Whitehead Avenue. And below that, you'll find there's going to be a six lot residential subdivision on Meadow Street. I have approved the preliminary plan for both of those projects, but I, over the coming months, will review zoning permits for the homes to be built there. Additionally, the, because it's going to be a major subdivision project, those require additional infrastructure construction, including sidewalks, tree trees, and some other infrastructure improvements. So those projects will not begin until the town has reviewed and approved development plans and construction plans for both of those subdivisions. But I did want to keep that on your radar, that, like I said from the beginning, Spencer is really growing, and I'm very pleased that Steve Blunt is on board to help us out with reviewing the number of projects we anticipate coming up this year. I did also want to mention, I mentioned this a little bit at the beginning of this meeting, the planning board last night did recommend approval of two text amendments, and I wanted to go a little bit in more detail now, just so that you understand what you're being asked to set the legislative hearing for. Text Amendment 22-001 is going to reduce the maximum size of temporary freestanding signs that are allowed in Spencer. So y'all may have noticed, on Salisbury Avenue, there has been a proliferation of these large, in this case, political signage. And as it turns out, our development ordinance does allow those types of large temporary signs up to six months. In fact, someone can put up a 32 square foot temporary sign without needing a permit on Salisbury Avenue. And so what this change does is it reduces the maximum size down to six square feet in most of our districts, and four square feet in residential districts. And it also reduces the time limit to 60 days preceding any election. And so I do anticipate that that will go a long way in solving some of the problems that we've seen over the previous elections.
And for the board, you know, one point of clarification, this, part of why you're seeing that is the result of the new development ordinance that we have done related to 160 that we did over the last year. And so as we indicated, as we got through that process based on the timing, we recognized there were going to be some things based on those changes that we would have to go back and fix, and this is one of them that we have recognized that.
And then the other text amendment, TA-22-002, I already hit the main points with that one. This is simply something that's going to bring the town into compliance with new state law regarding how the town's development ordinance can be enforced. If you have any additional questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them, but I will provide a more detailed explanation at the next.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Harris? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Mr. Harris, any problems with the 200 South Salisbury business as far as that goes, as far as they're over?
I'm sorry, you're requesting an update?
The, yeah, update on that property right there for me.
So we have conveyed the conditional zoning ordinance with all of the updates that the board made at your last meeting. I have sat down with Mike King, we've established the timeline that he's going to be expected to abide by, and actually, we, James and I are going to meet with him in the coming weeks to continue to review that project. As far as I'm aware, they have met all of the requirements so far. There are some deadlines coming up with regard to required improvements, and then I will continue to work with him on the alley closure process. So it's all still in the works, but he is, at this point, in compliance with all of the requirements that came into effect immediately upon adoption of that report.
I appreciate it. I hope you and Mr. Osborne keep tabs with him and make sure everything's followed through to the letter. Thank you.
Kyle, will you provide us? ...
Yeah, you will have the exact language. In fact, I'll prepare a separate memo that clarifies everything.
One quick question as well. With the decriminalization statute, well, we, I know a lot of that is adjusting not this, that, you know, times and amounts and things like that, that can maybe take some time. Has the planning board made recommendations on that, or in terms of what the fine or penalty should be, or?
No, this change does not alter any of the specific fines or penalties.
Okay.
What it does is it reduces the town, it eliminates the town's ability to criminally enforce these ordinances in a way that's not consistent with the new state law. So it doesn't go in and change any specific penalty or monetary fine. We continue to have the ability, for example, to issue civil penalties, levy lanes, issue stop work orders, and other actions like that.
Okay.
And just to add in, there will likely, there will, there are other ordinances unrelated to these, the development ordinances, that are having the same issue in terms of the state law, and that's the next step, is to go through and recommend to the board where we need to either adjust the language to remove a reference to criminal penalties or enact some language to allow the use of criminal penalties. So that's, that's another step to come in a broader sense than just on the development ordinance.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Mr. Francis, do you want to introduce Mr. Blunt formally to the board tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If, well, the town attorney may be right, he's somebody who may need no introduction, but Steve Blunt has, has joined us as planning and zoning administrator, and he has gotten right, right down to business, I would say, and it's been, it's been great getting, starting to get to know him and work with him, and he was hoping to be able to speak with you all tonight, so I think he appreciates the invitation.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, it's a pleasure to be here and an honor to work for the Town of Spencer. I appreciate you hiring a good manager who had the sense to hire a good planner, and pass the credit along to everybody that's involved in this process. For some reason, and we'll have to get this fixed, you don't have PowerPoint on your computer in here, so I'm actually going to give you some handouts, give you some homework.
By the way, I discovered that By the way, I discovered that little technical challenge earlier this week that we didn't have PowerPoint on there.
So that will be resolved, and really, I'm not here to make a long presentation to you tonight, but I would be remiss if I didn't do two things. Number one, I need to introduce myself to you and let you know who I am and what I'm about as your planner. Some of you I know and know me, others I don't. So let me just say that I'm a lifelong resident of Rowan County. I've lived in Spencer for the last 31 years, built a house over on Pick Avenue, and been there ever since. I got my undergraduate degree in business administration at UNC Chapel Hill a decade ago, a long, long time. And then after serving as county commissioner for 12 years, I decided I wanted to get into planning and went to UNCC and got my master's in community planning. Have worked for the last five years in Granite Quarry as their town planner and code enforcement officer. So when I hear complaints about code enforcement, I want to speak up and answer some of those complaints, but I'll not do that tonight, I'll do it some other time. Also work as a Rowan County magistrate. If you ever get in trouble, you'll get to see me or one of my colleagues, but hopefully you'll never grace that wonderful little office. The thing I want to mention to you tonight, and that's what these handouts are about, is comprehensive planning. And I did this with the planning board last night, got a surprise response. How many of y'all have a copy of this sitting on your end table next to your bed and read every night?
Well, it's on my bookshelf.
Okay. How many of you have a copy? How many of you have read this at any depth? You got clued last night?
I have read it.
You went home and read it last night?
No, I've read it two years ago.
Okay. This is your town's comprehensive land use plan. It is often a plan that gets adopted and put on a shelf and forgotten soon after, like a lot of plans do. It is an important plan to the degree that when 160D was passed by the state, they took what was a suggestion in the past and made it a mandate. Said that if you're going to have the authority to do zoning and subdivision in your community, you have to have an adopted relatively current, that's one of those terms that lawyers will be arguing about in the coming future, but relatively current comprehensive land use plan. Yours was adopted in 2008, and to my knowledge, has not been revised since 2008. And therefore, it would be hard to convince a judge that this is relatively current. And therefore, in your wisdom, in this board's wisdom, you appropriated money in this year's budget to revise and create a comprehensive land use plan for this town. This is, again, such an important document that when the planning board and this board adopt rezonings and text amendments to the zoning ordinance, you vote for something called a consistency statement. And again, most people think of it as a formality, but what you're saying that is, in your opinion, that rezoning or text amendment is consistent with this plan. And at planning board level, only one person had ever seen it, and none of them had a current copy. They asked for a copy, they wanted to see it. And yet, every month, they were voting for a consistency statement that said what they were doing was consistent. This plan is badly outdated, it's due for revision. The documents I've given you, one of them is just about the comprehensive plan update process. And it's how we go through the steps, what the actual process is supposed to accomplish in addition to creating a plan. The process itself helps bring your community together, create a common vision, and therefore gets your board together, gets your planning board together, gets all your staff together, gets everybody thinking about all the things that go into a community plan, and then helps us build all the other plans on top of that. Just adopted a new development plan. And really, if you go back and read the statutes, the way they suggest a brand-new town do it is figure out your comprehensive plan first, and then adopt the development ordinance that enforces the comprehensive plan. We're going to do it backwards here, okay? You're not the only town that doesn't have a current comprehensive plan. There's a little place down the street called Charlotte. Theirs was adopted in 1975. They don't have a current one, and they're scrambling right now to get a new one in place. Theirs is going to be a little bigger than yours. The other document I gave you is a PowerPoint presentation that I would have put up on these screens, although my old eyes, we do have a PDF of it. You can go through this at your leisure, but it's a first look at the visioning process, and the first part of visioning is knowing where you are now. And where you are now has changed dramatically over the last decade. When I first started out as a young person in this town, we heard rumors that at some point in our lifetime, there would be continuous development from Atlanta all the way to New York, along the I-85 Park. And decade after decade, I heard that prediction. And quite honestly, it's getting close to coming true. The thing that's important to Spencer is to realize that for decades, that prediction and the growth influences of our region didn't quite touch up. Charlotte didn't come quite far north enough, obviously Raleigh didn't come south enough, west enough, and Greensboro just really wasn't growing that much. That has all changed. And the part that's changed most dramatically is the Greensboro area, the counties surrounding Greensboro are now seeing amazing industrial and commercial growth. Along with that comes new housing demands, and those demands are no longer going to recognize the Yakin River as a dividing line, split right all over into Rowan County. O'Barris County, Concord are now considering moratoriums on all the new subdivisions. Not because they don't like the growth, they've run out of water. They don't have the capacity to serve new subdivisions. When that stops, all that growth that's coming up the I-85 corridor is going to skip right into Rowan County, and better be ready to take care of the decisions that come along with them. That's what comprehensive planning is all about. That's why this is important. It's an exciting time to be a planner in this community, and I hope you think of it as an exciting time to be an alderman, because you're going to be asked to make decisions for this community that will paint a picture of what this community can be 25 years from now. And then we're going to figure out ways to make... So I'll be around anytime you need me, feel free to contact me. I work best by email, send me an email, I'll get your response right back. I work 24-hour shift, but I'm a magistrate, so if you send me an email, I might send you something back at 3:00 in the morning. That's just the nature of the game. Be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
All right, the board have questions for Mr. Blunt.
Glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Are you, uh, on both staff?
I am working basically three days a week, but I live five minutes from this office. I'll be available anytime somebody needs me. If I can't run up here and solve a problem, again, I'm available by phone and text or email. Most of your documents, maps, are available online. Again, when I'm sitting at the magistrate's office, if somebody asks a question, I can pull up the information and give it to me. You're only going to pay me for three days with me. Don't get carried away with all that.
Any other questions? Mr. Blunt, thank you. Mr. Harris, thank you. All right, we will move to Mr. Osborne and our code enforcement update.
Mayor, a board member.
Good evening.
Give you my December highlights. I had a total of two cases for the month of December. I told you last month, I was focusing on reconciliation, so I didn't have a lot of proactive cases. These were considered complaints called in. I had a total of 427 cases total in my highlights I got for the report, I have to apologize. I sent out one notice of lien, that would be the one that you voted on this evening, and I filed seven liens from the previous group that we confirmed. Did one minimum housing inspection that goes along with the one case, it is a minimum housing case, which is still open. And I continue to do case reconciliation, I'm focusing a little bit more on some of the older cases from the previous code enforcement, 2019 and 2020. I am now, for the year, I'm down to 59, total open at this point, as of today. I was able to close, I believe, two or three of the existing cases from 2019 or 2020. I don't have that number on that, but I was able to move some of those. And of course, you can see that we moved into the offices here, that was a big move for the month, especially a short holiday, so it was quite chaotic during that time frame. I gave you a pie chart here because for the whole year, I guess it gives good representation of the different types of abatement or whether they're open and the percentages, so you can get a good idea of how those things are flowing. I didn't have my open cases for the year, or for the month of December, but I put it together in haste. And in the back, you can see the remaining cases that are open for 2020 and 2019. There are some things moving along with some of these properties, I'd like to mention some of the older ones for 2019 first. Right now, 509 South Iredale is still pending an auction through the tax office. That one, that particular home is in rough shape. I spoke to an investor, see if he was interested in the property, he said it'd be pretty rough. In his opinion, it's pretty rough. I don't know the status, I sent out a request to the tax office to get a status of that auction, I'm told it was supposed to be cleared up before December, but I haven't heard anything yet. And it still appears to be in the former owner's name, so I put out the request to see if anything's moving on that. 303 South Iredale, that particular one, reaching back out to the individual who is the husband of the owner that Kyle and I spoke to last year about moving forward with the renovation of that property. It seems that the numbers he has given us in the past has changed, so I'm not sure what's going on with that. 613 Fifth Street, the investor I spoke to about earlier is interested in that particular home. Last I heard, he made a formal offer on that home. I have yet to get an update on that, I've requested an update from him on that status. Hopefully, that particular home will come up, I looked back at the records, and that's been a problematic home for this town for some time and its former code enforcement officer, so. 403 South Rowan, we had a meeting with the owner, Joe Coy, came out from California, myself, Powell, and Steve, we all got together with the owners and the folks together to talk about that's going to move forward. And they've got a new contractor they're going to work with to start the renovation, hopefully in, what is it, March, they're working to possibly start in March before that, so we got a good inspection on the home and the status inside and out, and so we believe that's going to move forward. I think Joe Coy is quite motivated to keep that office back. 603rd Street, I'm in the 200, 2020, open cases, I'm sorry. 603rd Street is still pending foreclosure. There is an investor interested in it, but he's still working through the process for that. 409 South Rowan has a new owner and I'm attempting to contact that owner in reference to some of the issues on that, I'm sorry, it's a different home, I apologize. I need to reach out to him. 155 Lee Street, I believe I can close that one. I need to go back out there and inspect that property. I've been in contact with that owner for some time, and so we've been working together with that one. 115 Alexander is under, has a new owner now. I need to reach out to speak to the owners at 15th and December 12. 504 Fifth First Street, I need to speak to him, and 11611th Street, that's still open. Recently sent out a lien to that particular property for abatement on the one. The owner of 11611th Street is deceased, and their, his heirs are not interested in maintaining the home. And so they took care of the taxes on it, but they didn't forward any further on the property, so I think there's an investor that might be interested in that. As far as that, that's what I have for the month of reporting, depending on your questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Osborne. Are there questions from the board at this time?
Hey, on most of these minimum housing issues, are the people that are redeveloping, are these tenants, I mean, are these people that actually going to live in the house, or are they just going to?
I'm starting, just the first part of your question.
The houses that we have listed here for 2020?
Okay.
Minimum houses, the ones you're saying are being redone, as far as that goes, are they actually people that are doing it, fixing the house up for themselves, or is it more or less a tenant rental property?
Uh, these are, these are properties that are vacant and/or being, are owned by somebody else out of town. Is there any specific properties you're interested in?
Yeah, I think the question you're asking is, the investors that you've been talking to that have expressed interest, are they expressing interest in renovating them for rental purposes or for selling them for permanent residence?
I understand, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. These investors are interested in, for the lack of a better term, flipping them for homeowners. They're not interested in land, being a landlord. They are interested in making profit off these homes, as most flippers are, but they bring these homes up the code and bring in, in my opinion, they bring in potential citizens that add to our community, so I think it's a good thing. I think flippers have a negative connotation for the most part, but I think they do a service to the town. I've been in contact with several of them, one's more active than the others, but tends to like to keep six to 12 properties on handed in at any time. He does things outside of Salisbury as well, so he does new builds and he does renovations.
Okay, thank you.
And any other questions?
Any other questions at this time?
Two, actually. Could you explain, I think one's kind of self-explanatory, just so I'm clear, the three categories, you have voluntary abatement, administrative abatement, enforced abatement. What are the differences, just so I understand?
So voluntary abatement is where, if I spoke to you and said, hey, your grass is hot, you need to take care of it, and I said, yeah, sure, I'll take care of it this Saturday, and I go by there on Monday in this mode, that's a voluntary abatement. That was a face-to-face, you agreed to take care of it, I didn't have to take any other type of enforcement actions, like a notice of violation. An enforced abatement would be considered where I send that particular property owner or, and/or tenant, a notice of violation for whatever that may be, high grass, junk pile, that type of thing. If they abated themselves, that'd become an enforced abatement.
And the administrative?
Administrative would be something more along the lines with unfounded or something that felt was no longer applicable to the codes or something that, and I know it's a bit broad, but I just came up with some kind of way to identify it other than the means of clearing out the case.
You mentioned, second question, you mentioned, you know, ten or so properties, and two of which were pending tax foreclosure auction. I'm familiar with that process myself. Is that, that seems to be taking a while. Is that a problem, in your opinion, and what do you think could be done about it?
Well, that's really a process that the tax office maintains, I don't have any input on that. I'd like to see it a lot faster. Obviously, you're quite familiar with the auctioning process, once somebody clears out the liens and the taxes that are open. And once it goes up for auction, it could take some time. It leaves them properties dilapidated and gets worse and worse, and it brings down the community, that's a process I think the tax office would benefit by reviewing, and maybe if they can stream that a little bit, stream on that a little bit better, I think it'd be a faster process. And I think for those people who are invested or even looking to purchase some of these homes, it would make them more open to it, because once they see the process is cumbersome and kind of labor-intensive, then they kind of tend to back away. So I've had some people ask about specifically 603rd Street, and they backed away from it. And I'm not sure exactly if it was because they're not owed, or if it was the process, but I think it is the labor-intensive.
Yeah, I think you're touching on something. Do you, I'm familiar with Third Street. I just moved from Second Street. So I'm very familiar with 600 Third. And I think maybe the Fifth Street I'm familiar with as well. I mean, do you feel it's a problem that the taxes are 20, 30, $40,000, the house is probably objectively worth not much more than that? I mean, is that part of the problem or do you think it's more, there's more to it than that?
Well, from my understanding is that the tax office manages the entire account. That that individual up there that manages it is very particular about how they go about foreclosing on properties. So I spoke to her at length early on last year about the process and she's basically trying to make sure that she doesn't overwhelm the system by, you know, slowly working on these foreclosures. But some of these foreclosures are, they wait till they're seven, eight years delinquent. And so I think the process, they need to speed that up and need to kind of, the threshold needs to be three or four years in my opinion. But, you know, that could overwhelm the tax office as well. So this is the process that I don't have a lot of input in, but I have to work within it.
Well, I, I know you don't have a lot of input, but we as a town and a board do have input into that and can advocate for that. And I think, you know, Mr. Howard, you're getting at an important point in the, you know, we need to control what we can control here, but there are also other forces that have input into how we can control that outside of the town and we need to be advocating for it.
Mayor, and I'll, I'll add to that. If the town has buyers for lots and they're delinquent taxes on it, there's a third-party law firm that handles the foreclosure for the county. And the general standard is that they, they're, they're more interested in foreclosing on properties that have buyers. They don't foreclose on properties that don't have active interest. And so they send those files to the law firm and the law firm generally works to get the interest up, see if there's interest. But a lot of times if there are properties on your list or requests or interested buyers, then certainly they, they move that property through the foreclosure law firm. They can work with that buyer and they can set a schedule and sales go through sort of the bank foreclosure process. Anyway, so that's a matter of getting that information of interested buyers, interested lots to the town.
And that's a process that I was made aware of with the 712 South Salisbury, the old gas station down below us here. I requested from the tax office if they put that for foreclosure and that's, the answer I got is that they need a buyer. I didn't know they were doing that with residential homes, but it made clear to me about the particular gas stations, which is very difficult to sell.
Well, yeah, gas stations are for obvious reasons, but but residential properties are, are a bit different if they're occupied. They don't tend to foreclose on properties that are occupied or something. They tend to want to work with those.
Other question? Yes, I've got one, just quick update. What is the status of, I know we've switched over with the software and everything and getting everything up. We heard earlier with public comments related to the reporting online.
Uh, yes, actually that's been posted on our website. If you go to the websites on the main page, it's a red button and it says, report an issue or a problem, I believe is what it says. And quite visible. I think it only stays on the main page right now. I talked to the town manager about maybe putting it on the top bar to see if it stays on there, no matter what page you're on. So that's always visible. But it's, it's up and active. The community wants to utilize it. I highly encourage them to use it. That's why I spend as much time working with I work to get this system in place so that way we can open that line of communication from the citizens to the town so that we can work on things in an efficient way. So yes, I encourage everybody to utilize that, not just for code, but for public works issues as well. It has a, the reported issue button at the bottom is for public problem, the pro, hot hole. There's a code one and also for permit. So people need to submit a fence permit or whatever else they can go through that process. So I highly encourage them.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Thanks for the update.
Uh, and I'd like to make a comment on the public comments. I'd like to kind of speak about that. I appreciate her coming forward and speaking about the condition of the town and what she feels is not being taken care of an appropriate amount of time for at all. But I would like to say that to this, to this day, I do not know whom Miss Elton. I've never received a complaint from her via email, phone, or any other form, which still stands today. Those emails are still there and my phone number has not changed. I've had multiple interactions with that tenant, including for possible canine issues. They've had a lot of dogs in the past. So there were some interactions about that because the business beside of it was having people leaving their business because of animals. Beside that. So I've spoke to them a number of times with their property and the issues with their animals. As of today, I've revisited that property and I've reviewed the codes. I've also consulted with other coworkers about the codes and how it's applicable. And as of right now, the only thing that I see I can apply is some of the issues on the port would have been a quadrant. The outward appearance of the yard may be a bit rough, but it is not necessarily in violation of code in the way I interpret it. I'd like to change in the future if I could get a different viewpoint. So I'm not saying that's the, the way it's going to be. I'm just saying that's the way I interpret it. So like I said, I appreciate her viewpoint, but she's welcome to call me anytime. Email me, the emails still work. Send it to my new email account. And so I'm open to any form of communication. But I highly encourage her to use the portal.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. And, you know, I'll just say, we're appreciative as a board of the work that you do. You're a one-man show and there are lots to do in this town. And I think a lot of times, sometimes our, our citizens forget that. But there's a lot of work to be done and you're one person and you can't do it all. We appreciate the work that you are doing. And our goal as a board is to make sure that you and our enforcement, code enforcement department has the resources and the staffing that you need to effectively address some of the issues that we have, continue to clean up the community. So you're doing your part. Thank you. And just know that our board is behind you to continue making sure that the, the resources are there to help you all out.
Mayor Williams.
Yeah.
I'd like also add that I appreciate the citizens, both tenants and homeowners who voluntarily get that, their issues taken care of. I mean, that's by far the largest majority. I mean, 43% almost have. And I think it's wonderful that they do respond when you do contact them. Most of them, I know some of them do, but most of them don't. And I appreciate their effort.
That I do as well.
Yeah, I guarantee you do. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
All right. Detective Sergeant Fall, we will invite you forward for the police department update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the board. Certainly good to be standing here with you tonight. As many of you know, I was not able to attend last month's meeting. I was laid up with pneumonia. So I am in a much better place today than I was 30 days ago. Um, with that said, I provided the customary report for this month. I want to kind of add to that, that I ran the yearly numbers. We were sitting at 17,602 events for the year. So our officers are busy. I want to openly say that we're thankful for them in this meeting and that they're working hard for us. That averages out to about 50 events per day. So they are definitely out here earning their keep. With that being said, if you have any questions, I will try to answer anything and everything you have about the police department.
I will kick us off with just a couple. Two is, can you give, the first one is giving an update on staffing and relative to our agreement with sheriff's department and reliance on that. And then the other is then as a follow-up to that, your efforts with recruiting and being able to bring additional staff on board.
That's perfect. Yes, the, the agreement with sheriff's office is working very well. So we work hand-in-hand with a lieutenant up there as far as scheduling goes. So we're not really having any problems covering our shifts right now. So we do have 24-hour coverage. Even some overlapping coverage at times, which is good during our peak time. Currently, we have two individuals that are in the background process. They just, just got started in that process. It will take a number of weeks to work them through that. They both are already BLT certified. So both of them pass the background process and are able to be hired. They would be ones that would be able to hit the street much faster than if we had to send them actually through BLT. Kind of to transition that into the recruiting portion of it, we do have some additional applicants that have applied that are requesting to go to BLT. Obviously, that is a process that takes a number of months. I have reached out. There are approximately 40 candidates at Mitchell. Their class just started this week. So some of them are already pre-hired. Some of them are available for hire whenever they graduate, which will be, I believe, May of this year. So they work a, Mitchell works a staggered school. That's where Officer Brown went. They run concurrent classes. We're running comparison, Davis and typically run one spring class at a time. So there's a little bit of extra ability down there to potentially pick up extra candidates. So I actually just spoke with them this week about that. So we do have, we do have some good potential candidates right now. So we're kind of working through that process and hopefully we'll come back with some good information in the next month or two.
All right. Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
The two people you're doing the process on, they currently outstanding, I mean, they're working some.
Well, they're actually split. One of them is currently working in another agency and one of them has graduated BLT. So shaved off about that four or five months worth of training. Obviously, there'll be a little bit of difference in time from when they'll be able to hit the street work. So bringing somebody on that's from another agency, obviously their field training time that we would train locally would be a little bit shorter. Where when you bring a new candidate on, typically you're looking at about three to four months of training that we do in town. So it'll be about half of that for a candidate that we bring from another agency. Kind of, kind of staggering, which is actually good because the lower level of staffing, that gives us less certified field training officers to actually be able to do the field training when we bring somebody on. It's, it's kind of good to keep it staggered right now.
And if I may, I'd say that the staffing picture and covering shifts is also improving through the progression of field training and some of the officers that we have had in field training. And I don't know if you want to speak to that more, but, but I believe the ability of the current staff to work independently is, is, and cover patrol shifts is improved as well.
Right, right. Definitely. Yeah. So Officer Brown should be slated to be completed with his internal field training at the end of this month, which means he'll be hitting the street working by himself beginning in February. Quite, quite likely we'll kind of do an overlap shift with him being his first month. So it will allow us to, to kind of step down some of the sheriff's office coverage and start picking it back up for ourselves. We'll probably still obviously have to utilize them for another few months until we really bring our levels back up to where we're not at triage level and we're back at full capacity. So I would anticipate that we will still have deputies for most likely two to three more months would be my, be my guess depending on how these hiring processes go. In two avenues, yes, working underneath the sheriff's agreement that the board had previously approved. We're still working under that. Now, kind of, kind of to elaborate on, on your question, I believe is what you're asking. So obviously with the events that happened at Catawba College, we have increased school security. So we have additional time slots allotted to us by the school system for additional security at all three of the schools. Some of those we have put out outside agencies to be able to assist us on that. Because obviously we don't have the manpower to cover all those additional hours right now. Tonight is actually the first night that a game has been played at home at North Rand High School. So there's additional security over there. The school system did put in place having show pros, which is an outside organization, do the winding security. And we have mandated that we're going to have no less than three officers on staff at the school during every sporting event with our target being four. Tonight, we have five on staff over there.
Great.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you for your efforts during this difficult, you know, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Very good things from the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Chief Lanning in our fire department report.
Mayor, member of the board, members of the board, good afternoon. As always, I'm going to try to keep this brief. Couple of things I do want to point out, we have got no further with our surplus of ladder 75. I'm still hitting dead ends. I mean, conversations with fire chiefs around the county, they have often time used a broker to get rid of their surplus equipment. So that's something that me and Mr. Franzese, I hope to talk about in the next couple of weeks. That would be something you would be interested in. And at least trying to get a little bit of funding back from that truck, if not all that we paid for. In conversations, many people believe we would be able to get terrible to what we spent for it out. So that's an update for that. We did receive our spec sheet and a ballpark price, just for an idea of what a new engine would cost. Currently, this does not include a seven to 15% increase manufacturer-wide, you know, not specific manufacturers at the end of January. Currently, that is $741,000. So just kind of keep that in the back of your minds. Special events, as Mr. Miller brought up, we did have a event called Spreading Christmas Joy this year. It was a last-minute thought. Some staff was open for it. Some thought maybe it was going to be a waste. It was privately funded along with a generous donation from a citizen. I handed out over a hundred, or Santa handed out over a hundred bags of candy and small toys to children who are out town. It took us roughly four hours. We did try to.
It was greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. We tried to cover every street the best that we could. Do what?
Can you say ho, ho, ho like Santa Claus does?
Yeah. It was well-received. Obviously, take that and make that bigger and better each year. Our annual awards banquet was scheduled for last Saturday due to COVID and the trends of that outbreak. We decided to cancel that. So I just personally met with our award recipients and gave them those awards. Coffee with Fire Chief was held this morning via Zoom with zero participants, with the exception of Mr. Taylor. He came and drank coffee with me. So I guess he got to relax for an hour or so. In terms of staffing and personnel, we still have one out with COVID. As, two weeks ago, we had three personnel that were affected by that. As of yesterday, I think I met Stacy, did an employee action form, transferring one live in to the training position so I will assist with our part-time staff. We are also, what I documented there is staffing concerns. So we've gotten to the new year, hiring people late in the year. Last year, we were able to kind of use and abuse them, not hold them. They weren't going to meet the 999-hour threshold. We're back to everyone having to comply with that six shifts a month. So we're currently about 30% of our shifts are vacant. Kind of like I've discussed before, unfortunately for me, that's going to mean me running calls every night, every weekend, kind of no break. It's unfortunate, but it'll do for now. So again, just an emphasis that some sort of way solution of staffing is high on the priority list. And with that, the issue with hiring more people is we are, it's a good thing. We're to the point now where we have no access for nothing. Budgeted for five sets this year. That is bordered with a 20 to 25-week leave time, once that size measured specific for the individual. So I'm working on a solution. In the meantime, I'm hoping to make an agreement if anybody that's hired, so a permanent solution is found to, hey, we'll use their gear from their home department. Obviously, would something happen to that or it be damaged, then I would be, or the town would be responsible for repairing that gear for them. In short, that's the only quick solution to still allow us to hire individuals. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief?
No, but you're going outstanding under staff.
What?
For fire equipment. If, I was going to mention some of this a little bit. If, I was gonna mention some of this a little bit later, but, uh, I can now if you, if you'd like.
Sure.
Uh, so last week, the, uh, US Treasury came out with the final rule that offered some flexibility for especially smaller units. That did not previously exist under the regulations thus far. Uh, just like you might have a standard deduction on your taxes, there was an eligible use category of revenue replacement that had a lot of flexibility. If you could formulate, meet the formula to show, uh, a revenue loss. Spencer didn't experience a pandemic, uh, revenue loss, but with this standard revenue loss, uh, concept that is now out there, it opens up a lot of flexibility for use of funds. Of course, that's still a conversation that needs to happen in terms of, uh, is that how these funds ought to be spent versus some of the other eligible uses? And we, uh, on Monday of this week, had a kickoff with Centralina in terms of the spending plan process. That's gonna kick up, kickoff with some public feedback to get the public's input on what the pandemic impacts were for the community, but also in, for the various eligible use categories, which there are about twelve of them, which ones are a priority for the community? And so that's the kinda information that in the next, uh, weeks, we'll be able to put that out there and get feedback and start the conversation, uh, to include having some sessions at Centralina will assist us in distilling that, starting to craft a spending plan. So, uh, the short answer is, uh, anything's on the table in terms of what we might do with the funding. But those are some of the things that have changed most recently in, in the, in the picture of it.
We have revenue loss.
They, I don't know that it would meet the formula requirements. I, I believe over time there has been some decrease in power, power bill. Uh, of course, that's more related to gasoline purchases than pandemic perhaps, but, uh.
The pandemic.
Might be a threat, but, uh, of course, and the other thing is power bill funding, you know, has to be.
Right.
So it may be a threat to. Right. But there is a standard amount of rubbing law.
Like ten million flat rate. We obviously don't get that much.
Right. Other question? My understanding is there's a recommend, or a, uh, a recognition to be made?
I need to call the cops if you let me. You lost?
Just tripled our size of kid.
Hello?
There.
Welcome.
And Captain Comer, if you could use the microphone that way, folks could, could hear you if they're watching.
Uh, I've been with Spencer Fire Department for nineteen years now. Uh, I've been with the police department twenty-three. Uh, so I've got a lot of history and knowledge with the fire department. Uh, when, uh, I started out, Chief Baker, uh, then we went to Chief Grubbs and Chief Baker and Chief Grubbs and Chief Carter. Uh, while all of those brought different things to the table, when you hired, uh, Chief Lanning here, you hired a total package. He has brought our fire department from the stone age to, to, uh, warp speed to up to date. He's only been our chief for one year and in that time he has accomplished a lot, more than most chiefs do in their whole tenure at a fire department. Dan Morgan knows what I'm talking about. Uh, Chief Lanning has improved relationship with other departments. Uh, he's improved, uh, personnel at the fire department, uh, equipment, training and personnel. Uh, one of the biggest things that he did, and I say one of the biggest things he did, uh, was update our policy, uh, our SOG. Uh, in my nineteen years with the Spencer Fire Department, this was the first time this has been done. And this is something that should be done annually. Uh, Chief Lanning has looked out for the future of the fire department. He keeps preceding personnel, bringing other personnel up. Uh, Chief Lanning runs calls twenty-four, seven. I mean, he, he just don't put in a business day at the office. Uh, I will see him out at one, two, three o'clock in the morning, uh, running calls. It's like any time that Pedro goes off, he is there. Uh, he is relocated, his personal family here to the town of Spencer. Uh, and, and bringing his wife and, and children to be a part of our community. Uh, he's increased the, uh, relationship with the transportation museum as well as the public. I think I've heard him refer to it as customer service. Uh, one of the biggest things that, uh, Chief Lanning has done for fire department, our ISO rating, he has brought us up, like I said, warp speed in one year from a class four to a class two. Uh, with that being said, uh, we'd like to present to you with this plaque as our appreciation personnel, fire department. Uh, if you'd like to read it to the board? This is something that all our personnel dipped in to get to the peak. That's how dedicated we are to him as he is to us. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So to the staff, thank you. I got those all day one. It's about y'all. It's about them. All right. As long as we put them first, them being our citizens, while we're on the right track. Um, I don't know everything. We'll learn together along the way. You have to, excuse me, I do terrible with recognition for myself. I'm not good with that, but, um, thank you guys. I couldn't do it without, don't make my job.
I wanna say a couple of things on behalf of the board. First, chief, thank you. Um, Captain Comer said it perfectly. You have taken our department, uh, to a different level in warp speed over the past year. We are very, very grateful to you and your service, um, for, uh, commitment you have to our community and being a part of the community. And that's been incredibly evident over the last twelve months. Your wife and your kids, thank you for sharing him with us. I know what a commitment that is on your part. Um, and I wanna say to each of you as our fire department members, we are incredibly proud of you. Chief Lanning does a great job leading, but you all are leaders in your own right. And you have made this department into something that it has really never been. And so we're in uncharted territory and you're each a part of that. And we are so very, very thankful for the work you do and putting your lives on the line every single day. You serve our citizens and our community and you are making our community a better place. So thanks to each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture of the fire personnel.
Absolutely. We're gonna take a timeout.
A timeout.
Kinda find a place.
Yeah, just standing.
Hey, we're gonna need to pull in a little bit.
I got.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kenny Golliver, wanna be?
Okay.
All right. Well, welcome Mr. Taylor forward for Public Works update.
Not sure exactly how I'm supposed to follow that, so. We'll give it a shot. So good evening, mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
Just a couple of notes from Public Works. Uh, just a, um, mention of trash service next week will be one day late because of the holiday being on Monday. So just wanted to mention that. Um, the holiday schedule for this year has been placed on the website. So it has been updated and put on the website. If you wanna go on and print it out, I wanted to let everyone know, um, it's good to follow because some of the days do change, uh, from year to year. If it falls on a weekend, it really kinda messes things up. So, uh, if they'll keep that, and we have found that by doing that, it really has cut down on a lot of phone calls and questions, um, in the past. So we did that again this year. Um, leaf vac, I know it was put in there that we were gonna be done with the leaf vac. Well, the leaf vac broke, so, um, we are not done with the leaf vac yet.
The big leaves.
Yeah, exactly. Um, the one that was damaged has, we've shut it down completely. I didn't wanna do any further damage to it until I can get some parts. Uh, the other one, we went to lift it, cylinder blew out of it. So I have got the cylinder off, uh, it's being fixed. Uh, should have it back by Thursday this week, but we will run leaves again next week and make sure everyone's leaves get picked up before we stop.
Still time.
There's still time. There's still time. If you wanna, if you wanna put them out or those that are already out, I just wanna let everyone know they will get picked up before we stop running the back. So, um, we're making adaptations as we're getting there. So, um, it is what it is. Uh, the remainder of the Christmas light should come down tomorrow. Uh, planning on that, the bucket truck had a little issue, but it's fixed, so we'll get the rest of those down tomorrow. Uh, a question for you guys and it's been brought to me, um, just letting you know, uh, some of the members have wanted to leave the light on, on Town Hall, um, specifically since we don't have any lighting in the parking lot yet. Is that, I'm throwing that out to you guys, is that okay with you to leave them on?
I think it looks great. I drove by yesterday morning when it was still dark and it looked great on the fire department and, uh, Town Hall.
Okay. All right. And I'll be happy to leave them on the, the fire department as well. We can leave those on. Uh, I don't foresee leaving them on in the older building, um, you know, to have double. But if, if you're okay with that, we'll leave those running.
Being shaking heads.
Kind of a consensus? Okay. All right. Well, we'll leave those going then. Um, we did have a gentleman to retire as of January first, uh, Mr. Grayland Watson. Uh, he's been with us about nine years. Um, he did retire. So we're, uh, Stacy and I are in the process now of receiving applications, um, from letting this out to everyone. If anyone knows of anybody that would like to apply, please apply. And, uh, we'll be going through those and getting interviews set up and that kinda stuff soon to get that position filled. Um, the drainage project on Seventeenth Street has been completed. He did come in and completely do it, drawled it. He said he will keep an eye on it if there is any spots that settle a little bit from the being wet that he would take care of them. So that's, that's in the, but as far as the, the project itself is done, um, it has been completed. Um, just an update on the C cap, uh, the C cap, uh, thing. We did get a packet together and have certified mail to the one individual. So, um, as soon as we hear back from them, we'll be setting a meeting date, uh, hopefully soon. And then we can move on for, for ready to get text. Um, I'm available for any questions that you have in?
I just wanna say thank you again for all the work that you have done. During, during, uh, the forward, during the nap.
You survived.
No problem, no problem at all.
I need it. Yes, Mr. Miller.
The, uh, the bus, uh, I can't even think of my words tonight. The bus, uh.
Shelter.
Is it gonna be cut out pretty soon or what, what's the deal?
One, we were waiting till after Winterfest. Uh, two, uh, Joe and I have been discussing this as far as incorporating it into some of the park plans. So we wanna make sure where we put it, we possibly don't have to move it.
Okay.
Um, cause there will have to be a pad for, uh, for it to be set. And the winds we've had lately, I'm glad it wasn't a fear, um, anchored into that asphalt because it wouldn't be there. It would be in the middle of St. Gregory Avenue. Um, so we've been in discussions about that as soon as we can, cause I know that the, the firm's starting to look at it.
Right.
Um, we'll try to get that on the front park so we'll know and we can go ahead and get it in. But it's, it's together, sitting at the shop. It's, it's waiting. Um, we're just trying to get that set before we, so we don't have to duffle it around three or four times.
So that's a really polite way of saying Joe's the holdup.
Yeah, it's, it's Joe's the holdup. Yeah, exactly. I like that.
Joe's always the holdup.
It's okay. It's okay with Joe.
We love you, Joe.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is in your purview, but what about the lighting in the parking lot?
Uh, the lighting in the parking lot, I think, uh, Peter has a update more so than I do. But I know that Duke has reached back out to us, uh, with the plans.
Did they respond to your latest email?
Okay. They've not. I, I talked with Keith Wales today, uh, actually about that and, um, it, it's really.
So now it's my turn to respond to the.
Go ahead. Okay.
So I asked Peter to copy me on correspondence with them and just indicate how important it is to us and our community. Cause we have lots of folks that are, you know, asking about it, concerned about it. And so the next step is for me to now follow up with the.
Think we should help if we started calling Duke Power on a daily basis and saying, hey, could y'all put some lights out?
If you would like to do that, that would be great.
I can call. I've been on hold with him plenty of times.
Absolutely. I think, uh, again, the more pressure we can, can put on them. Absolutely, I think though, again, the more pressure we can, can put on them, the, we're not, they're not being responsible.
Right.
So we'll continue to push on that.
For the record, they never have. That's been an ongoing sore point for a long, long.
Yes.
I've had several uh citizens ask me about the parking back here. Now, our end looks beautiful and then get to the other end that hasn't been done. And I know, I'm aware that that, that's not our building, if I'm correct. But it really is a big, big discrepancy. Is there ever any chance that that will be extended all the way to Fourth Street? Especially with us losing all this parking out here eventually, because we could already use, use that next year for Winterfest, for it.
Discussions are being had between several municipalities and.
Property.
Form of contractors on, to see if we can make that happen.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
So it is, we are working with some partnering agencies and Robert's.
Wonderful, wonderful.
No, no resolution on that yet, but we are, we, we recognize, we all recognize it's an issue and want to.
Yeah, it looks.
Come to some solution about how we address it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, I had a citizen commend you all for picking up something they put on tour about the ball. They said it was gone the next day, couldn't believe it, they wanted to know who to call.
And it's like, oh, yeah, no problem, no problem whatsoever.
And I have one more question.
Okay.
I've had several citizens ask me, and I might have missed this, but when will be our next uh time when they can put out TVs and things like that like we did last year? Will we do, be doing that again in April maybe?
I perceive that that being probably in, in um, in timeframe with the litter sweep, kind of like we did last year, and that is towards the end of April.
Yeah, somewhere around.
Um, we have not set a date yet by any means, but I perceive that, yes, there will be something similar to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have not, I, I don't think we've set that um formally, but I think we do want to continue that.
I agree.
And so we'll set that date, make sure we publicize it um in the website newsletter and that sort of.
Ben Gettys is retiring in April and that originally was his idea, I think.
It was.
Conducted by our church, so maybe we can see if he really wants to get involved this year.
Absolutely.
This way.
One, one other thing, again, I don't know if this is something that is in your department or not, but um Mr. Shipman, who lives down the street from me, called again today to uh talk about noise from the speed bump.
Speed bump.
Um, he indicated to me, and I thought he was gonna come tonight to, to speak, but um apparently he was not able to get here. But he um has indicated to me that he has severe PSPD and that the noise that is coming from that speed bump is very distressing to him. And I, I told him I did not know what the intent would be, but just wanted to mention, you know, this is at least twice that he's spoken to me about.
All right. Okay, uh, let me do some research and see what we can do as far as maybe softening that up or, I'm not sure what to do about it either.
Problem is, if you soften it up, then it's.
Useless.
Yeah, yeah, the whole point it was put in for.
My thought is, is possibly adding a second one, um, or some sort of, I don't, let me do some research, I'm not. I mean, let me just do some research and see what we can do.
And, and I said to him that the intent there was trying to slow down the traffic of the children who walk in those, you know, those streets with those sidewalks on their way to school. That was the intent for the initial installation of the speed bump.
Right, and we're still plugging with the NCDOT about the other end of Carl Street as well. So every time I toss the mic, I kind of prod him, he'll fix that street, get it up hard and entertain the idea to take it over. And then we can do much more.
If, if the hole gets any deeper, we could always consider putting a pool in.
Oh, sure, that'll work, that'll work.
All right, anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next item is our finance department report.
Mr. Softley and uh Ms. Hutchinson have provided that uh in the packet and uh everything is coming along as it should, the financials. Uh, I will note that uh one thing that, that John Softley is looking into is towards our closing with the USDA for this uh, this project. Uh, the original interim financing with Truist was uh set to go until beginning of February. The project closeout with uh, with Vertex is still in process. And so USDA has let us know that they do not believe we'll be ready to close uh in time for the, the early February timeframe with Truist. So we are working with them on an, an extension to our financing with them. Uh, and that will likely require a called meeting of sorts sometime later this month uh in order to uh finalize that. But we are waiting to hear back from Truist.
Do they have any kind of timeline on the, when our generator will get here?
I heard today, actually, the chip, the ship date is the fourth or sixth of April. It, it's, they've identified that, so it likely would be a few days after that to get here. And then um there was an amount of time uh in our contracted denim that Vertex then has to install it. Thirty days, I believe, so it's, it's within the timeframe that it seemed like it was going to, which is good. Uh, but what, in terms of the interim financing, uh USDA has suggested that we seek an additional sixty day extension with our interim financing to allow us to uh finish the project closeout and uh with the USDA.
Are they gonna pay the interest for that sixty days?
I don't suspect they will.
Is it anything holding us up with our payment to Vertex as far as it goes? I mean, is everything pretty well complete for the building?
So the, there was another walkthrough today. Uh, it is very, very close. There's still a few things uh that we're waiting on. For example, the lettering out front.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Uh, but, but it, it is getting closed and it seems like we should, within the next few weeks, be able to proceed in that, in that direction.
This problem with just getting material, is that basically it for it to do?
With the lettering?
Yeah, with everything.
They sent the wrong lettering the first time.
They did.
It was.
It said, it said Town of Granite Quarry, right? They did like. They did.
Could we sell it to them and charge them for it?
Can we spell it a little different?
It had to do with the way it mounted to the, to the building. It, it didn't, wasn't gonna work and they had to re, rethink it, but they, they actually, it sounds like that's gonna be resolved this week, what I understand, their lettering, so.
All right, any uh questions on finance? Okay, and next is our library report. You have that in your agenda packet from Mr. McColl. Stacy, anything you want to add to that?
Good afternoon, mayor and board members. I have nothing else to add to it. If you have any questions, I'll be.
Yes.
Stacy was kind enough to give me her package that was printed, so I just wanted to say, no, she didn't have that report down there with her.
So that's why.
Yeah.
So do you want to give the report?
I'll be glad to.
No, we have it in our packet, so. Any questions from the board regarding the library tonight?
I want to say, uh, congratulations for reaching a thousand books being checked out. That's actually harder than you think it is because so many people access Kindle for myself included. But I think that's wonderful and I imagine a large part of those books were checked out by children too, which is even better. So continue using our library and I think this um McColl has done a wonderful job of connecting with the community and going the extra mile to do things that bother us.
And also the event that we do, just, you know, just, I don't think anybody in the county can hold a candle to the library events that, that we plan. Small facility, we do a lot, so there's Mr. McColl and her work and everybody that uh helps out with the library. Any, anything else? Okay, we'll move to the town manager report. Mr. Franzese?
Thank you, mayor and members of the board. One, one item uh that we've already talked about, we actually talked about a few things that I was, I was going to mention. Uh, but you see tonight, you're sitting at uh, not at tables, but at a uh fabricated dais. And, and so that was one of the uh items that was not in place last month. It was delivered uh just, just before uh the holiday. And so uh I think this finishes the room off nicely. Uh, but again, I, as I just mentioned, we're, we're still working through the project and uh, but we're going in the right direction with getting things closed out. Uh, the uh, one, one other item I wanted to uh mention is, of course, the idea of thinking about the path forward for determining the, the use of our old property and also our neighboring lease spaces here. Uh, that's something that perhaps at the upcoming strategic planning session, we could talk some more about, but wanted to uh add that seed into the conversation. Uh, I know you, you heard a few months back uh from the SC Academy group with some interest in uh potential use of our prior uh facility for uh, for school use. When the town attorney and I uh discussed, uh, it turns out that a change of use of the former building uh would require getting, getting everything in that building up to code, uh, which is a, that's a, that's a basically a very prohibited.
Would cost more than five bucks.
Uh, so, so it just, that just does not seem to be feasible for the town at this point. And we can communicate that back to the group to let them know and certainly appreciate their interest, but it's unfortunately just not gonna be something we, we could pursue at this time. Um, and so, you know, again, the, the, the town certainly wants to find the, the highest, the best use for the property and what that looks like. Uh, what it's like to get it on the market. So um I think we ought to spend some time uh February talking about that and establishing the next step for, for how we get in that direction. Uh, you've also received some information from the town clerk about required ethics training. Of course, every time there's a elected official, is it either elected or reelected? You have twelve months to complete some required ethics training. I believe it's a two hour training requirement. There's some uh resources out there and uh the town clerk has provided you access to a platform that you could complete that on your own time, on demand, if you like. But there's also other opportunities to do that. Uh, so just let us know if you have any questions with that process or if we can assist you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Mr. Franzese, um, in reference to the office of police chief and the finance manager, are there any updates in reference to that at this time?
Yes, actually, we, we had a kickoff call with uh the PTRC staff yesterday. Uh, the, the strategy for these processes with them assisting us is that we're going to uh first focus on the, on the police chief and they've got some sessions scheduled uh for next week to start to get some feedback from staff and also from the uh police chief citizen advisory board to help develop a candidate profile. We believe we'll be able to have that process open uh in early February uh and, and go from there. The uh job market right now, especially for finance officers, is very challenging. And they have noted that they are assisting a several units with finance officer, assistant finance officer processes. It is a very challenging environment, so they think that it could be changing. Uh, but they, they, they kind of put a warning out there that that process may, may just be challenging in terms of finding folks uh interested in, uh, in applying, but we will do everything we, we can to uh be set up for success in that. We've also talked with them about a portal that will uh allow folks to apply, not just police positions, but also some other positions. Uh, our organization where we want to reach out, whether it be a firefighter position or a police officer position.
Hmm.
Uh, uh, that is exciting advancement in our recruiting processes that we'll be able to uh work with them so that when we post a job, we can have it on our website, uh, but there will be an application portal that supports the application. But part with, with that also comes the ability to push those job ads out on, on some of those online job search resources that we're currently not able to reach, so that's where we are with those.
So the finance officer, is it posted though, but does it have a relative to the job? On our last.
We haven't posted that yet, uh, just due to working with, with PTRC on the process.
They helped us with the last one.
Yes, yes. Uh, the, the strategy that we discussed was just focusing first on getting the police chief process going and then just so we're not putting everything out all at the same time, uh, after that's out there for a little bit to allow uh the next one.
My thinking is if we're half a month away, get it posted out, get a feedback. We've already got it ready to go. Uh, both of them are critical positions.
Yes.
We've already got everything ready to go. To me, it's just, it's out to, uh, to finance. And I know that's more work on the TRC part, so we're paying. And it's more work on staff part here to be able to manage the interview process and all that. But again, there are two, two positions we need to, we need to have in place in relative, in relatively short order, um, based on the time.
Thank you.
Economic development uh group here also has jobs. They pull, I can pull that from a lot of different sources, but if the job posted, that might be a way to get that about too.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Franzese on his manager update? All right, hearing none. We will now move to item eleven, and that's consider amending the fiscal year twenty-one audit contract. You recall, we amended it at our last meeting and the amendment was to extend the time. Uh, the audit firm is once again requesting to extend the time. Um, and they do have a good reason for doing that, so Mr. Franzese, I'll let you bring that to the attention of the board.
Yes, so after the last extension, they weren't able to proceed with it due to staff, our team uh getting COVID. And so now uh they've reached back out, asked for the, till the end of January. Uh, they've assured Mr. Softley that uh it will be completed in this timeframe and, and Mr. Softley has assured me that there's not an issue in terms of a, a risk or penalty to the town. We just make sure we're doing this process to keep the LDC up to date.
All right, so with that, other questions related to this request to amend the contract? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to amend the contract with the audit accountant to extend the contract to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two? Motion by Mayor Preffler, the second.
Second.
Second by Miss Fled, any further discussion? All in favor? Right, opposed, and that is approved. All right, the next item is consider authorizing town staff to apply for a Robertson Family Foundation grant for the town mural project. And it is my understanding that Sky will be joining us via Zoom this evening, correct?
That's, I believe that's correct, yep.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen.
Good evening.
Um, are you all able to hear me?
We can.
We can.
Wonderful, all right, it's good to see you all, you're looking well. Um, so I'm going to share my screen. I've made a short presentation about uh the request I've made. If I'm able to do it correctly, okay. If I'm able to do it correctly, okay. All right. All right. So again, good evening, Board of Aldermen and town manager and staff. So I am approaching you today to ask for permission to apply for the Lanche and Julian Robertson Family Foundation Grant. The purpose of the application would be to fund the restoration of 10 vintage signs and murals in downtown Spencer. You're probably familiar with a few of them, but a good chunk of them are probably so faded you didn't even realize they were there. And in addition, we'll be attempting to fund a brand new mural on the side of the new town hall. That would be the white painted side currently facing Fifth Street. During the process of creation, I will be, I or a higher videographer will be taking photos, taking videos of the process to eventually share as part of a digital map of all of the current murals of Spencer online. So here are several of the, or all of the murals I will be attempting to get funding for. First one is the Stand Back Headache Powder and Rowan Drug Company murals currently on the side of the Nebulux Music and Recording Studio. The estimated repair cost of the Rowan Drug Company sign and the upper mural is about Below it at the same address is a Coca-Cola sign, estimated repair cost $2,500. The, this one is on the side of Roger Dog's Restaurant with an estimated repair cost of $3,500. And this is both, this is, it's a bit hard to tell, but this is two murals side by side, one of which is another Stand Back Headache Powder mural and the other one is a Coca-Cola mural. Up above that, on that same location, is a Wallace Real Tea Company sign with a repair estimate of $1,500. And next door to Roger Dog's is a drugstore sign. At the moment, it says drugs because the lower half of the sign has faded almost entirely, but according to the artist we've hired to, or not hired yet, but who we are hoping to contract with to restore the murals, there is an entire lower half of the sign that has completely faded at this point, but the repair estimate for that would be about $700. Now, this moving way down the block to Mary Mays, there are two, there are several murals on this building. On the left side is a Stoudemire Furniture mural and this one is not as badly faded as the others and will only cost about $500. And on the other side, we are hoping to repair the upper Stoudemire Furniture mural at $500. And below that one, there is a C.H. Morrison mural, which with a repair estimate of $1,500. The total estimated repair cost of including materials and labor of these historic murals would be about $15,400 and that would exclude renting either a lift truck or a scaffolding apparatus and that would depend on the conditions of the site. Some of them can only be accessed by the roof and it would make more sense to use scaffolding. Some would make more sense to use a lift truck. And these would be weekly rentals and the cost of that would depend on the length of time that it takes for the artist to repair them. So we, I've got all these estimates which were included in your packet from Thompson, Cuppens, Thompson Designs, a local mural artist who has a lot of experience repairing murals and has done several in Salisbury right next door. And the proposed location of the new mural would be at this location right here on the side of town hall. It is currently painted white. There's nothing there at the moment, but it is prime real estate for a new mural that is, I guess, celebrating more forward, exciting moments we have going on right now in Spencer. We currently do not have a design, but we are hoping to, we are planning on soliciting designs from artists in the community and that will obviously be subject to board approval. A more simple style of mural would cost about $5,000 whereas a more complicated mural could cost up to $20,000. So that will obviously depend on the design we decide on in the next couple of months. The mural, or the grant is due on February the 20th. I've already begun the process of applying. Many details are still up in the air, but I am coming to you today to get permission to officially apply for that grant. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sky. Do board members have any questions about the project or the grant?
I have several questions and a couple of comments. Sky, I don't know if you already know this or not, but Coca-Cola has an entire division dedicated to renewal of these old outdoor murals that they used heavily for advertising back during the 20s, 30s and 40s and so on. And so you might want to, if you haven't already done so, you might want to check into that. Also, to go back to the image of the side of Stoudemire Furniture, they're located Circle K, I would hope that no one will try to resurrect that particular mural that was done through a grant that's just was a horrid, horrid piece of artwork that replaced an even more horrible piece of artwork that was under it that looked like a bunch of three-year-olds had done it. So I would hope that in our search to select a mural, that we do not rely on just input from students or I would hope that we would seek out professionals that do this for a living and really do some unique and very thought-provoking murals. So please, I would ask that you would please consider that as you go forward.
And I guess.
Yes, I definitely will. So at the moment, there are no plans to restore that lower mural of the big steam engine.
Thank you. On behalf of many.
There are plans for maybe a different mural of a sort, but that's not the project I'm looking at at the moment, but it's definitely one I would like to take on, given this one goes well. And when you were referring to earlier, the outdoor Coca-Cola mural fund, so that is something that I and some other staff members did discuss, but something that was brought to my attention by Joe Morris is that when that was done in Salisbury, the colors appeared rather, I suppose, garish and they didn't suit the historical character of the area. And they actually hired the same people we're hoping to contract with, Cuppens Thompson Design, to touch up the mural and change it so that it didn't stick out so sharply. That was the considerations we had on that front.
In other words, Coca-Cola's process, it basically makes it look like a brand-new sign, which in some applications, you know, actually Concord's done a few of those and everybody loves them, but if you're wanting the outcome to have that vintage feel, that wouldn't necessarily be the result of working through Coca-Cola's process, but again, some people, some communities have enjoyed that. If I may, I would also add a few general notes of the town does have in the budget this year, $5,000. So this would allow us to proceed on a larger scale or a quicker scale than we admit, you know, than the budget funding envisioned, that $5,000 could get you a mural or two a year, basically. So depending on the final process that Sky's working through and finding the best amount of a grant to apply for, that could open up some opportunities here. And then the other part, just to keep in mind, is we're talking about artwork going on property that the town doesn't own. And so that will entail us getting some agreements from the impacted property owners to, one, get their permission to have this work done on their property, access and those sorts of things. So that would certainly be part of a process of going about these projects with those property.
Yes. On that front, I have a, I have a first draft of a MOU that we could use. I've taken examples from other towns who've done mural projects and created my own. It's a first draft, but I do have that in the works.
Certainly appreciate Sky jumping out with this, with this concept and I think it's, she's done a lot of good work so far, putting this together for your consideration, certainly hope you'll agree that this would be an exciting thing for the town.
I look forward to being able to see some of these signs restored. Sky, I want us to also not forget as we look for new sign designs or replacement of certain murals. Mr. Morgan has a great design that he has shared before, that he shared with our board, geez, was it a year, two years ago, that I would love for us to consider, a welcome to Spencer sign, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Keep that in mind, too.
For where the steam engine is, the steam engine mural?
That was where he had proposed it. Yeah, I think it could work there or even on the new town hall as well, either one.
Okay. Yes, definitely. I mean, I chose the painted side of town hall because it was new and it had been mentioned a couple of times, but the, if the town decided it was appropriate and wanted that, I could definitely like have the funding be for that steam engine mural, like a new one over that existing mural.
What do you think is, from a board perspective, is the more pressing need? You know, one of the things we've heard with the new facility is, especially during the summertime, that white wall for some of the neighbors is very bright and glaring. In any way to soften that, I think would be appreciated by folks who live on Fifth Street or have businesses there. On the same token, you know, the old Stoudemire Furniture building, you know, it's kind of the entrance to our downtown area and we definitely want to make a good impression there. So I don't know if there's a preference for what location we should target first for a large mural.
How much work would it take to paint over, efficient, paint over that existing mural? In time, time and money and energy? I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, having painted murals like this before, I think really painting over it would be a waste of resources and money because ultimately you'd have to turn right around and all of this stuff would probably need to be sandblasted and, you know, the old paint removed and bricks sealed and repointed and also a sealer put on before any kind of mural put up there. So.
That sounds like a large project in and of.
Yeah, it is. It's a very time-consuming and a very nasty and dirty process as well. So because you can't just apply new paint over old paint, just, you know, like painting the house or anything else. If you've got old paint that's already, you know, letting go, that's substrate, you're just going to wind up with a mess. Sky, whenever you do look into this, you know, that's probably one of the things that you'll need to take a look at is professionals coming in and stabilizing, removing the old paint and doing, you know, doing what's necessary to prep, prep the walls to accept new paint.
Of course. If the board would like me to, I can ask the Thompson Cuppens Design if they would, if they would provide us with an estimate about what it would take to prep and finish the surface and the creation of a mural of that size. I can definitely do that.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing, it sounds like, let's proceed as you've proposed, Sky, with the grant application that you've provided and then this would be a separate, larger project, probably going to take some more planning.
And I can send you some of the proposals that I've done and I can also send you samples of other mural companies that have, you know, done things beautiful, pieces of art, I mean, just fabulous things for, you know, different communities all over the place. And even the, you know, when we did our proposal for Hometown, you know, that Laurel, the place where they live, I mean, there's that, they use that mural that's been painted for their town as backdrop for the intro to the program. And like I said, they're just some very phenomenal things that have been designed over the years that reflect not only the town, but the communities that live in.
Yes, absolutely. I'd very much appreciate it if you sent those to me.
Okay. Sky, thank you for all your work on this. This is exciting.
Of course. Thank you so much.
With that, is there a motion from the board to authorize town staff to apply for the Robertson Family Foundation grant for the town mural project?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morgan, second by Mr. Mohammed. Any further discussion? All in favor? Right, all opposed, and that is approved. Thank you, Sky.
Thank you.
All right. And the next item is a request to set a public hearing for February the 3rd during our pre-agenda meeting for February to review the temporary signage ordinance amendment and the amendment for decriminalization of development ordinance enforcement, as we heard from Mr. Harris. Is there a motion from the board to set that public hearing on February 3rd?
And just to clarify, I think we're talking about two public, two separate public hearings, one on each topic, is that correct?
Okay. The same date, two separate hearings, one on each individual.
I move that we set the date for the legislative hearing on these text amendments for February 3rd.
Thank you. That's a motion from Ms. Fled. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Howe. All in favor? All right, opposed, and that is set for February 3rd. With that, we've reached the point of our agenda where we have requests or comments by the mayor and Board of Aldermen. And so with that, I will start with Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to especially recognize tonight, Sky Allen and Mr. Harris for their work on the grant program. You know, he made a comment that had a great turnout by all the businesses, had tremendous response. Well, the only reason they did have a response was they personally went out and visited all the, explained the process and encouraged these people to put in a bid for these grants. Without their hard work, I question whether that would actually happen. So again, don't recognize, sometimes we need to recognize the hard work behind the scenes, but thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Fled.
I expected you to come down.
Oh, no, I'm going outside in.
I think I made a public comment earlier about the, I'll ask you about the feedback on Charles Street. Again, thanks to the Public Works Fund for all their, all that they've done. I will say that I sat in the planning board meeting last night, had the opportunity to hear from you. I'm very pleased to be with you. Look forward to having the opportunity to hear more of what you have in mind. Thank you. I had registered for Cambridge then, that is now postponed because I moved to LA. I did sit in on Central Atlanta Council. But we have it on yesterday on five full for the, I think it actually has a long name that is still friendly. So thank you again that I'm be able to participate in the part of fame that is happening.
Ms. Fled, thanks for your work. Mr. Morgan?
A couple of things. I kissed 2021 goodbye in the hopes that we wouldn't live through another year of misery involving COVID, but it looks like that, you know, here we are again.
involving COVID, but it looks like that, you know, you know, here we are again. I would encourage everyone to stay safe and take precautions, you know, whenever you feel necessary. This is, again, we, this board, most of the members on this board have been at it for two years. There's still a lot of work to do. And, you know, there's one thing I've learned, you know, you can't legislate morality, but you sure can hold people's feet to the fire in terms of compliance with codes. And Mr. Osborne, I get the feeling sometime that you're overwhelmed with your duties. I'd like to go back and revisit that property at 104 Sowersbury Road. The people that live there like to wait until you go home, and then that's when they park all their vehicles in the front. How they get three or four vehicles in and around those pine trees is beyond me. But if we're ever going to succeed in making this town more attractive to businesses and families, we're going to have to get tough with code enforcement and holding these people accountable that continue to make everybody else's lives around them living hell. And again, I keep going back to, taking a little trip from Bojangles out past Sowersbury Road. Almost every resident or every other resident there, as you come across the bridge from East Spencer, you look into the backyards, I mean, it's like Home's salvage yard has somehow jumped the tracks and wound up in our laps. Up and down, I mean, it doesn't take anyone with a keen eyesight to, to see that we still have problems. We still have renters, we still have homeowners who do, don't give a rat's hindquarters about their living conditions, and they couldn't care less about their neighbors. And so we've either got to beef up our codes, beef up our fines, and, or do, you know, make more liens, whatever's necessary, because I've been beating this dead horse since 2005, when I was first, an alderman at my first term. And it's basically the same people causing the same problems, and it's just unacceptable. And again, I'm going to be a thorn in everybody's side until I see it starting to change.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Mohammed?
First of all, I would like to say kudos to all the departments on all the hard work that they've been doing for the town and especially the Public Works with Joel and his crew for trying to maintain, you know, the beautification of this town, you know. I talked to him about some of the issues with the brush and different things of that nature, and I know he's been running some things on double duty, and that's very much applies, you know. Just take a notice of, about the good work. Just looking forward to continuing to do in this service here.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. For Howe?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think number one, just to kind of echo what Mr. Mohammed said, I think, you know, the second time I've heard most of you stand up and talk to us, and I think everyone's really pulling in the right direction with the departments and, and so it's good that we maybe have some, some real positive momentum. I think that's a holdover from what, what you all have done already, but I think it's good to see. I think Fire and Police, you guys are holding down the fort, and so well, well done, keep up the good work. I think to, to piggyback off what, what Mr. Morgan said just a second ago, I do, I'm basically talking to all of us, I'd, to, to back up to the, not, not to hit on something that, that did the auction thing, I don't, I don't want to get on that too much, and I, I know the tax office in Rowan County, I'm sure they're, they're, they're covered up. That list from Kenya is, is like four pages long, and that, that's like fifty, fifty homes per page. They've got lots of work to do. But I think if we could find ways to help code enforcement identify those types of homes, and so they're not sitting six, seven, eight, nine years before it finally makes it to a tax foreclosure process, that's not helping code enforcement, that's not helping the residents, that's not helping our town. Now, what the solution is to that, excuse me, I, I don't know, and I, I'm, I'm saying that now, I'm not sure, but I think if we can find a way to, 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 to speed that , to borrow a term we've used a couple of times tonight, to, to push that along, I think that'd be something worth talking about coming weeks from now.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Miss Fledge?
Um, I'm, I'm real real happy about a lot of the things I heard tonight. I love the mural idea. I remember those murals when I was a little girl, seeing the old ones, and I think it's wonderful that we're going to restore those, and I think that's a step in the right direction. I'm real happy also about our staff. I think we've got quality professionals that are probably the, the envy of other municipalities in the county. And I'm also very excited about our grant projects for the hometown innovation grants for small businesses. I've lived here my whole life, and I didn't know all of those businesses existed till I saw that list, so that really made me feel better, too. And I have also reached out to the schools. I have not been able to set up appointments yet because of the COVID situation, but I am planning on meeting with the administrators of the school, I hope by the end of this month, and seeing what we can do to help them with their young people. I think we have a lot of really, really good things going on in Spencer. I know we've got some things that we've got to address, and we are addressing them. It's going to take some time and patience of the government who's told me sometimes, but I'm real excited to see.
Thank you, Miss Fledge. So I'll piggyback on the excitement, because I've had a chance, you know, periodically I have a chance to talk with our town staff and have done that over the holidays and had a chance to talk to a variety of folks. And the one commonality that I keep coming across is y'all are excited about our town. You're excited like our board is, you're excited about the possibilities, there's a lot going on. As you mentioned, Miss Fledge, it's not without its challenges, but that's the local government. But, you know, to each of you, y'all are working through those challenges, we're working through it together, our department heads are stepping up and, and tackling some of those challenges head-on. And no, we're here to support you and work through those challenges with you. You know, one of the things, we've talked a little bit about each of the departments. You know, I want to give a shout-out to our police department. Y'all have been dealt a really, really difficult hand here over the past several months, and you've reached out, you've reached out, you know, put out a hand for, for help to the sheriff's department and embraced that. And I know that's not an easy thing to do with a department inviting other, other departments in to help out. There's a bit of pride that goes along with that, but we've had to do it, and you've embraced it, and we're appreciative for that. And even more so, I think we're appreciative for the effort that has been put towards recruiting. And each of our officers, you know, we recognize they're having to pull more weight maybe now than they ever have just because of the staffing shortages. And you've all done that, you've done it willingly. Same goes for our fire department, Joel. Same goes for the Public Works, you know, with dealing with folks out with COVID and things like that. And everybody continues to step up and work as a team, and I'm just proud to be a part of, of Team Spencer, and I'm excited, just like all of you are, about what our future looks like. And glad we all get to work together to make that happen. Mr. Blunt, welcome. We're thrilled to have you a part of the team as well, and look forward to continuing to work with each of you. And so with that, is there any need to go into executive session tonight for general staff? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A move that we adjourn.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Morgan, a second by Mr. Mohammed. All in favor? All right, all opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all.